Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council. The City Council has, uh, the City of Marlin has scored second on the Downtown Revitalization Grant, which means the city will be funded for this project. Furthermore, the city has already passed Resolution 15-025, which authorizes submission of the application for this grant. The revitalization improvements will be $135,000 for the downtown revitalization projects, $15,000 for the administration of the award, and a $45,000 local map from the general fund, meaning a total cash award for this downtown revitalization project of $190,000. Section four of this resolution states that the City Council directs and designates the mayor as the chief executive officer and authorize a representative to act in all manners in connection with this application and the city's participation in the Texas Community Development Block Grant. It is my opinion in reading this section and the opinion of the Community Development Block Grant that no further action needs to be taken at this time. However, the mayor and I had a conversation, and I know in, in some of the discussions of the council that you prefer two signatures on executing contracts, so therefore if you wanted to add an additional signature other than the mayor, either a member of the council or myself, you could make a motion to do that. No, no action at this time will mean when the contract comes in, the mayor will sign it and we'll, we'll execute it.
Mr. Knight, we did that. That grant was to be signed by you and the mayor.
Uh, no, I was not here at that time.
Well, the city manager, whoever, whoever the city manager is, okay.
Well, Section four actually says directs and designates a mayor as a chief executive officer and authorize. So if you wanted to add the city manager to that signature, that would simply require a motion. When the, when the actual contract comes in, we'll put signatures for both of us.
Well, she's saying that that we did that.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we did that.
Well, then congratulations, you received the grant.
Okay, thank you.
It was explained that we passed the resolution to get the process started. It was our understanding that it wasn't going to be final until it's brought back to this table, to this floor, and we vote on the passing of it.
We can do that.
I think we need to do that.
Okay. Um, we need a motion to accept the, uh, the Texas Capital Fund Downtown Revitalization Grant, except one more motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion has been made and been accepted. Uh, any further discussion?
Yes, I have some discussion on that. I do understand that we need a lot of things fixed in our city. And my concern during that time was that if we're gonna pull these kind of funds out of our general fund, uh, I don't think that's a priority. Uh, I think that especially in light of our recent crisis, that we need to really do some budget workshops and go through our finances and see what we are looking at and where we are before we make a commitment to pass this grant. And that was my stand the whole time. And, uh...
If you do not accept this grant, uh, you probably won't get any more, but you'll be in line for the one next year and the one after that. But if you pass it up, it's probably, uh, yeah, it's not a sure thing, so we need to... Yeah, we need to.
But listen, it's a grant. The grants are gonna continue to roll. They're gonna continue to roll. More is earmarked for help. Uh, one of the things that I've been realizing in the past that we've been getting help, we, there's been a lot of mismanagement of our funds. And I think that if we pass this grant today, that is going to be a mismanagement of our planning.
Well, uh, any further...
Well, just listening to Mr. Brown about the sidewalk, I'd hate for the city to end up in a suit or something. Uh, I just feel that it's for the, you know, safety too, to, it'll help our town, we need... And there the grant is, uh, just feel we should go ahead and...
That's my opinion. All right. Motion has been made and has been accepted. Yes, just a moment. Motion has been made and been accepted. Mr. Henderson?
I think the problem wasn't really the grant. It was how the grant was presented to this council. They walked in with the grant in their hand and said, "This is what we're gonna do." Until we start working together as a group here, the people on the street or the good old boy system walks through the door and lay it here for us to do what you bring in the door, we trying to stop that. You need to come here not today to tell us what we need to do, come here when you bring it. Don't send it in here as if a council's not here. We trying to change some things. That's exactly why I voted for Mr. Knight, because he say he's gonna change some things the way it's been done here in this city. And to walk in here and put it on top of my desk and say, "This is what we're gonna do," and a certain area is wrong. I had just as many complaints about it around B&amp;B Market where business people were having the same problems. I will abstain because I was not here, and I had to leave and go on vacation a couple of weeks in the time that went on. But I, that's something this public need to know. Stop walking in through the door, telling this council what they need to do. That was already with a grant writer, and the grant was written and walked in here and laid it on the table, said, "Throw it." That's what's bringing the problems. I can tell there's a misunderstanding going on, and all the folk took the mic to that. That's what disturbs me. Bring it here, let this council make a decision, and we all together. But to come in and chewing people because you're not doing it the correct way, and the good old boy system that walks in here, I'm gonna leave it right there, because that need to stop.
I need to come in.
Yes.
That is my precinct that you're talking about Heritage Road. I was given a map of what would be done. Then they went and remesured for what they wanted done. I didn't know anything about it. They brought it in here complete with the good old buddy-buddy systems of all those that they had gotten together on. I am far doing something in this city because it is in a terrible shape. It's in a terrible, the entire city is in a terrible shape. But when I am to represent that precinct, I intend to represent it. I don't kill anything that this city can get, but I, that being my precinct, I don't even know what's on it. So I want you to swallow that, and how would you feel about that if they overlook you and go out there and bring in a bunch of people to talk on something that you don't know anything about? Now, where are they gonna fix the sidewalks? I do not know. That's my precinct. I was elected by the people, and this is what's going on up here. You say that you need to go home. You don't need to go home, you need to move those that are going undercover and going this good old buddy-buddy system. I didn't intend to say this, but it has got in me, and I am tired of, I've been in this town 84 years, and it's getting just like Alabama with George Wallace. And we gonna have to change it, come together, the guard is coming in here, and I want to see you move him. And I'm true, 'cause I don't know nothing about this grant, because it was gone over there, measured off, and brought in here. And the, and the map that they gave me and one of the other council members, we wrote it to make sure what was gonna be done. But now they got a different map. Why? Who did it? I don't know nothing about it, it's my precinct, but they bring people in here to talk on it. That's why this city can't do nothing, this good old, good old buddy system. And I'm finished.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Will you call for the votes, please?
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
Stand.
Councilmember Skaggs?
I have to stand until I see it, it's my precinct.
Councilmember Erskine?
Yes.
Councilmember Porter?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, number 10.
Yes. Ryan. Yeah. Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. I'd like to bring you up to date on some of the issues going on at the water plant. I also will address a few issues that were brought up during public comment time. I, I can tell you this, of the 13 major violations that TCEQ placed the city under for boil-water notice on November 19th, four of those major violations directly involved the clarifiers that Mr. Glenn claimed, um, were not part of the normal operation of this new plant. TCEQ respectfully disagrees and gave us violations for those not operating correctly. I have said, and I publicly said, that many automated features of that plant, nearly all automated features of that plant, were intentionally disabled by somebody. I cannot ascribe motive in people's hearts. I will not use pejorative words like sabotage, but I will tell you that automated features of that plant were disabled. Wires to alarms were cut so the alarms wouldn't go off. I could not ascribe motive. I can only tell you what we have found. It is my firm belief that once we are delivering drinking water to the City of Marlin, once we have fixed the problems with SCID 100, so we are off of boil-water notice, and we are working to upgrade SCID 200 so we can also produce drinking water, then this city and this city council should call for an investigation by TCEQ into water operators who have worked at that plant and by an independent law enforcement agency to find out if nefarious motives caused these, this disabling of factions of the plant. I am not imputing anybody's integrity. I am only telling, and I, and the one positive thing I'm going to tell you right now is the TCEQ emergency response team has been there with Scott as we open up control panels and we find wires cut and we find systems disabled, so they will be able to testify on what is happening. It is being documented. Why you weren't informed, I can't answer that question, I've only been here two months. I do believe that a number of your current operators were told by people in the past, whether in my chair or in a director's position, keep quiet and make water. Now, should there have been better oversight? I'm gonna say unequivocally, yes, there should have. Are any of you trained wastewater operators, were you gonna go out on that plant, were you gonna be able to figure it out on your own? Probably not. But I will say this, the, the, the system, the new filters, I told you on Thursday night, I'll tell you again, and I told TCEQ in a, in a conference call today, those new filters are not gonna see SCID 100, they're not gonna see a drop of water until that plant works as designed. Now, I have for you in your, on, on your desk, it was not in your packet when it went out, a resolution from the City of Marlin appointing the city manager as chief executive officer and authorizing representative to act in all manners in connection with a FEMA mitigation project and committing the city to providing matching funds to secure and complete a FEMA mitigation grant. Let me tell you what this is for. Because of the floods in October and earlier this year, of which we had major water topping over the dams at Old Lake and New Lake, we probably, and I use that word advisory, qualify for mitigation grants to help fix those dams and potentially for flood mitigation, dredge those lakes so they can hold more water. You have not approved a matching fund in your budget for this grant. Therefore, anything that I submit, we'll have to come back to this council with a budget adjustment, should we be granted any funds.
And I wanna say, just being new on this council, it is embarrassing to me that we make decisions the way we do. We have a water issue, we have an infrastructure issue. My mind says that we should be focusing on fixing that because, you know, nobody's gonna come here if you won't have no water. So I'm not gonna say yes to any other project that is not pertaining to fixing our issue. I don't, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not shooting arrows, I'm just, I'm a voice for you. This is your money's, and I wanna be responsible for how I'm a part of handling your money's. We are all upset because our water is messed up. I think any other attention is, is useless.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Are you ready to vote? Would you call for the vote, please?
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Rep. Potem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Skaggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Erskine?
Yes.
Councilmember Porter?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
All right, Mayor Nelson. I do, however, have additional good news for you tonight, and it just so happens to relate to, and, and the issue that Ms. Skaggs, Councilmember Skaggs just brought up. You have been approved for the CDGB grant for $300,000 for fixing the spillways at the dam. That, that money should be available in August of this year. Contracts will be coming forward, we'll have to do, uh, hire contractors, et cetera, et cetera, but you have been approved for that CDGB grant.
But Mr. Knight, will you be overseeing that money? Or who will be overseeing that?
As, as long as you keep me here, I, I assume you're gonna assign that task to me.
If you're gonna see back the money, you'll be there.
Well, you know, um, I also want a, a couple of housekeeping things on our current water condition. We are, uh, with the emergency declaration of water, of, of water restriction level five, we are producing more water than we are consuming. We have made the determination administratively that the washetery should be open for a couple of hours a day for sanitation reasons, so we are going to authorize them to be open from nine to 11:00 in the morning and from eight to 10:00 at night, that is during non-peak water usage, and that allows people who do not have washers in their homes to wash their laundry at the washetery. But it keeps, it closes during peak water use times of early morning and in the evenings, and we do still have some heavier usage of water in the afternoon. So 11, uh, nine to 11:00 in the morning, eight to 10:00 at night, the washetery will be allowed to open under these restrictions. The portable water system should be delivered tomorrow. We have engineers and one of their company's engineer here today to look at the piping. We're working with TCEQ on that. It should become fully functional, hopefully by end of the day, business day on Thursday, producing another 800 gallons per minute on Friday to supplement our SCID 200's current use, which should bring us a little over 2,000, 2,100 gallons per minute, which should meet consumption over the weekend, but we, of course, will continue to ask people to conserve water and to only use it for consumption, provided they boil it first, and for sanitary purposes. No washing your car, that's not a sanitary purpose. And with that, Madam Mayor, unless if there are other questions from the council concerning... Oh, there is, there has been an outstanding question since your last Thursday night meeting. Would you like to do some kind of discount or rebate on the water bills that will be coming out? Now, I will tell you that the water bill coming out in December is actually for water used up to the day of November 20th, so it was while we still had water. The water bill for usage in December goes out in January, so you actually can wait to make that decision until January. We can do a dollar-figure rebate. We cannot do, uh, the system will allow us to do a blanket dollar-figure rebate. It will not let us do a percentage rebate. But if you wanted to do some kind of rebate on people's water bills for the bills, for this billing period, which comes out in January, um, that is a decision you either need to make tonight or at your meeting in, in January, and, you know, if, um, you do have the time to wait to January if you want to, still want to think about it and whatnot, um, and, but I did check, I did check with, um, the water billing program, and, and it allows us to do a, a, a dollar discount, but not a percentage discount.
I'd like for us to go ahead and do it now, if it's okay, because these people have been through a lot, and, I mean, feel bad about all this, and I think now would be the time to do it. Dollar amount, and I'll be willing to even give a dollar amount, $100.
Would they have time to compute that, Mr. Knight?
Oh, yes, yes, we have, we have plenty of time, and, and again, to do it, uh...
To come out in January, on January 20th.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. It will not, it will not show up on their December bill, it will show up on the bill in, in January.
January.
I just have a question about the amount of money that we're gonna lose in that process, 'cause this city ran, runs mostly based on the water rates, and how much are we gonna lose and how that, how much is that gonna affect us at the end of the year? Because I know you kinda base your amount that you said we're gonna make for that year on the amount of water that we're gonna use, and I know our tax rates are not covering the total expenses. Maybe you mean, I need...
You know, sort of do this as a first reading tonight and then confirm it at your January meeting once you heard the revenue forecast.
Well, the main reason I'm saying that, I want you to give me a water rate and I get a tax hike.
You've already said you got a tax rate for this year, sir.
Yeah, but you understand I wasn't naked.
I, I agree with Potem, and I also agree with Ms. Moran, and our hearts, all my hearts are breaking, but I don't think we should make a quick, rash decision without calculating. That's part of the issue before we, we jump and make decision without calculating and we end up paying for it later.
Well, I feel this way, they didn't know, no one knew about the water problem. They woke up without any water, so...
I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm just saying, let's look at the numbers. We make or do more? Let's just see what we actually working with. I'm, I'm just against making blind decisions without taking into account what our financials are looking like. We crying, I hear everybody, we don't have any money, we don't have any money, more don't have any money, so we need to make wise decisions in how we're handling all that.
Well, I know, but I feel that we owe the citizens.
I don't disagree with you, Ms. Moran.
We are going to give the citizens some type of rebate, but we need to sit down and see how much we can.
Whatever. Uh, will the, um, the next bill that's due, will that become due before we meet again, or will it be after we meet?
And again, the bill that gets mailed in December is for your, you know, usage up to November 20th.
Okay.
So this usage, the bill people will receive this month is actually for last month's usage. So the bill that gets, what we're talking about is a rebate that will show up on the bill mailed in January that is for the December usage for this time period. So you will meet before that bill gets produced for January, uh, for, for mailing out in January.
All right, so we, we will wait till January to determine the amount?
And I will bring, I will bring the, um, how a $100 rebate on every bill would affect the revenue for the city back to this council in January.
Is that your recommendation, sir?
That was, that was Ms. Moran's recommendation, you can...
I mean, we can, I mean, what are you recommending? I mean, you're looking at the numbers.
Sir, um...
I think you need to stand and look at those numbers.
Well, for the, for the, for the disruption of the city, you know, uh, and I would always hate to say a, a sliding scale, but commercially, we, we have, we have wounded many small businesses in this community. We have provided a lot of inconvenience for individuals. There is, you know, I, I will, I will start at this hundred-dollar level, but I will also look at if there's a, um, if there's a way to calculate for commercial, for knowing people having lost business.
Oh, yes, yes.
And, and not that I wanna put business in front of citizens, again, we'll, we'll, we'll work, we'll work something out, and I'll bring you several sets of numbers for you to peruse in your packet that you'll have a week before the council meeting, so you have a chance to, to look at them.
That's good.
With your permission.
Before we leave that subject, one of the things that has bothered me, the bulge, I guess, about all of this, is the loss of revenue that the businesses have had. And I know that you and I had discussed when we looked into, uh, different types of programs and grants, uh, that perhaps they, we, they can recover some of that loss. I mean, we're saying, talking here in $10,000 here and $10,000 there, that's a lot of money for a small business person to lose through no fault of their own. So, um, just, so everybody knows that's what, we're, we're trying to find those kinds of grants and those kinds of, those kinds of recovery, economic recovery deals. Sometimes it does take a long time, but, uh, it, it, just getting anything back for the, for the, um, citizen and the business person will be, be good. The other thing before we leave that too, is that we do really need to come forth pretty soon with, uh, the cost and what it's gonna take to do for us, um, audit of the water fund, because that was asked for. Tommy Seahan asked for that, I have a great deal of respect for him, he has, uh, he's, he's been in this community all his life, so is his family, and I don't think he intends that to mean that somebody did something with it, but for the transparency of everything, we need to get that done, so everybody knows where that money has been spent.
They said including the water rehab, uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes, that is water rehab. They said the, the audit, that's an in-depth, um, audit on the water rehab.
And how many years back would you like that to go?
Twenty-five.
I'm not sure when you added the water rehab, um...
It's, um, I thought it came on when Mr., uh...
I just said Mr. Chan.
One year, and so that was like 2002, so... So it, it's been, it's been 15 or 20.
So essentially, you'd like to go back to when the water rehab, um, check, uh, box on the water, when that was added to the water bill, and do the audit for every year of, of... of, of how much was collected and where it was expended?
Yes.
That will require an auditor, of course, through your budgets, through your minutes, and everything else?
I know you can cut out some of that time if you go back to where Willis Rees was here. He the one started to go in there. That was his recommendation, that they go and start spending it rehabbing it, that I fought against forever. You can go back and look at it, and we were supposed to set it at a certain amount that would be there, and I said, "Leave that money alone." I'm, I'm sure you could start there, 'cause the money was there at that time, and he made a recommendation that we start spending that money. At end of a year, last year, we had zero.
We will, um, I, I will, I will talk, um, I will send out, uh, a request for qualifications for a forensic audit of the water rehab fund, going back to when that was added as a separate item on the water bill, most likely in the neighborhood of two thousand two, two thousand three.
I, I have...
And I will, and I will bring you what the cost of that audit will be.
I have, I don't know if this is the proper time to say it, but when I look at my water bill, I don't see the water rehab. I used to see it, I don't see it anymore. So could it read back, read, give you back on the water bill?
Thank you.
Do you leave it?
Okay, uh, we have anything else on this?
Uh, that's all I have. Unless if anybody else has any questions.
Okay, we are now ready to go into executive session. Uh, the time is six forty, and we will be leaving open session and going into executive session.